I'd like to call the October 19th Regular Board of Education meeting to order. And ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening to our meeting. For those of you who have not been here before, and there are a few faces I don't recognize, we do videotape our meetings, and our videotaping equipment is in the back. So if you would like to be on our video and like your friends to know that you attended, just turn around and wave at the cameras, and they'll be happy to get you on the government channel, which you can turn on to on various different stations on your TV if you have Our first order of business tonight will be to adopt our agenda, so I will entertain a motion for the adoption of our agenda.
Mr. President, fellow board members, I move to approve the agenda as presented this evening.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, school board members, we're excited this evening in terms of the superintendent's report. You'll get more than an opportunity to hear me read from a list of bullet points, but tonight is the first night that we put forth our quarterly open session update in terms of our work on the school board's priorities. As you recall, we agreed to update the board monthly in a written format and quarterly during an open session board meeting. And just to give the audience a little bit of background, the board adopted three priorities during the month of June. Priority number one is increasing the learning and achievement of every child through the development of a comprehensive academic framework informed by the needs of our students, the district strategic plan, and the 2016 academic systems review. Priority two is to ensure equitable access to 21st century learning environments by engaging stakeholders in a process to update the district's comprehensive facility master plan to meet the instructional programming needs of all pre-K through 12th grade students. Those are the two priorities that we will build upon tonight and provide the board with an update related to. Priority three is strengthening public trust in the district's governance leadership team by systemically enhancing communication involvement and collaboration to ensure constructive engagement within the school district community. We will not be presenting on that priority tonight because the superintendent's leadership team member on first base is enjoying some time in the sunny, sunny state of California. And that's Janice, who we're excited to see her be able to spend that time, and she's welcomed a new grandkid. So we'll do that during the month of November. But priority one and two, priority one is headed by Dr. Katie Collier, she'll get us started, and priority two Judy Hedrick. Before they get started, I really want to honor the fact that they've embraced this notion of building our work around a framework of less being more, and really honing in our work on three priorities that we believe can advance the district and get us to the place that we want to be long term. Thank you, Dr. Collier. Thank you, Dr. Hedrick. Dr. Collier, get us started.
All right, good evening. It's a pleasure to be presenting to you tonight, certainly all the work that we do centers around student learning, and it's really kind of apropos that we're having this presentation this evening when we're just about to end two days of parent conferences where our staff have been presenting to parents updates about the progress and learning of their own children. So we're certainly pleased to present to you our progress this evening on the priorities that you have established for this school year. First, for those who are guests in our audience and for those that might view this presentation online after tonight's meeting, we thought it might be important to spend some time just reviewing the process, though we're familiar with it. Not everyone's familiar with the process that we go through to establish the board priorities. This is an annual process that occurs, and it occurs in collaboration with the superintendent's leadership team and the Board of Education, where priorities can be established for a variety of reasons and have a variety of rationale when those priorities perhaps exceed one particular school year. And so this year, these priorities were established by the board in the same fashion, and we really look forward to and hope board members that you find it beneficial to receive regular updates throughout the year, each month and quarterly in-person presentations, so that you hear the ongoing work versus just the culmination of our work. So again, we hope that is beneficial to you. On June 14th, that final presentation that we'll do at the end of the year, that will not only be a culmination of our work, but we will be able to provide to you in all three priority areas, evidence of progress and productivity, and perhaps we might be able to engage in discussion with you that our current priorities this year, you might deem it necessary to have these priorities morph into the next school year as well. So we will go ahead and begin our quarterly report for quarter one. Our goal tonight is to be concise, but also answer any questions you might have. So again, priority one, for those that may not be as familiar, I'll reiterate what Dr. Carpenter already addressed. Priority one is to increase the learning and achievement of every child through the development of a comprehensive academic framework informed by the needs of our students, the district strategic plan, and the 2016 academic systems review. In June of every school year, we work with the CAC and board members to review our district strategic plan. In this particular priority, you will notice the statement of the academic systems review, sometimes referred to as the ASR. We believe at the end of the school year, there will be a marriage of those two particular documents, so that the work is very clear and there's alignment between those two particular documents. So let's look at what has happened so far this year with priority number one. Last spring and ongoing is the analysis of student achievement trend data. So data that we have been looking at includes and has included ACT, MAP, and of course exams, those occur at the high school level, subgroup performance, and then also the NWEA, which is an assessment given at both second and fourth grades at the elementary school. We had thought it very important to review longitudinal performance data, and we have been engaging in very thoughtful questions around that particular performance. While tonight we won't get into the specificity of that data or the findings, you will have some of those data points later in the year, when those data points will serve for you and for us as rationale for next action steps. In addition, I believe in November, Dr. Carpenter will likely make reference to some of that longitudinal data during his presentation to you in November. Related to the Summit of Assessment Information, MAP, and EOCs is the next bullet point there, and it refers to curriculum and assessment blueprint analysis. What that means in a nutshell is this, DESI has provided to school districts test blueprints, and in those, they have let us know what standards might be tested and the degree to which those standards will be tested. We believe that it's beneficial for our teachers to be well-prepped and versed in what those assessments will cover in their attempt to prepare our students for those assessments. So we want to make sure that our curriculum is proportionate with the degree to which students are going to be assessed on particular standards. And so you will see that that work is actually scheduled to be completed next week by October 23rd, at which time the Instructional Operations Team will review that work and discuss a communications plan out to our teachers. In addition, this first quarter, I included there focused leadership collaboration. What that refers to is that we have reconfigured some of our instructional leadership meeting structures to enhance purposeful productivity, and this restructuring has also assisted with key leadership teams, including those involving our building principals, with the hope of also streamlining communication. And then there's this notion of a culture of learning. This idea has merely been introduced to Instructional Operations Team and our building principals, and it's one we will develop even further. But the sense is that we want to establish and foster a culture of learning, not only for our students, but those adults that teach them every day. So at times, you might hear a phrase of differentiated learning for students. We know it's important, too, that we support and differentiate the learning opportunities we provide for our staff as well. And then there's this notion of beliefs and principles. And so with the Instructional Operations Team, with building principles, and we will actually be getting more aggressive in this work, we are engaged in reviewing our beliefs and those principles we believe that should exist in all classrooms, irregardless of the grade, the subject level. We will get to a point where we believe certain principles should exist, and we'll work with building principals, they will be engaged in that conversation further, and also work with our teachers and have those same conversations out in our school buildings. When we think about that beliefs and principles work, I heard a phrase one time, it said, "If your dreams don't scare you, perhaps they're not big enough." And we believe in the Instructional Department that it's important to dream the dream. And as we do that, and as we think about what we want the future of instruction to look like in Lee Summit, we want to make sure that that's accessible for all of our students, and we should dream such that we ask ourselves, "How will we get there? When can we get there?" And again, challenge ourselves for the benefit of our students. You recall the academic systems review, and related to this particular item, there's standard one. In researching other districts that have been most successful in the area of school improvement after the academic systems review, we have found that the most successful school districts focus on, first, standard one, and that is the area of control. And by that, we refer to board policies. So the board policies related to all things instruction are being currently reviewed. We have developed a timeline for that review that expands actually a year and a half, and we will be bringing those instructional board policies to you for consideration for any changes that we might be making recommendations for. This next piece I would like to talk about refers to the learning management system expansion. Last spring, early summer, you approved the purchase of Schoology. This work is actually being spearheaded by Dr. Kevin Whaley. There's a very robust timeline built here, and what we would want you to know about this is that Schoology will house our curriculum, resources for our teachers, it has a grade book, and provides opportunity for increased interactivity between our teachers and our students. We believe it's the spring board that will help us enhance our C2L, our one-to-one initiative for our students. So you'll be learning more about that, but that timeline and that work has already started this year. And then back to the academic systems review, there's this notion of a curriculum management plan. We believe the curriculum management plan is really the fulcrum or the hinge point by which all of our other future work is going to be crafted. And the curriculum management plan, you might wonder, gosh, what is that? A curriculum management plan defines for a school district the expectations for curriculum implementation. A curriculum management plan further articulates a template or the design format that a district and all curriculum developers will follow. It also outlines how curriculum will be monitored in a school district. It includes timetables for collaboration, planning, and pacing. So while we believe some of those pieces exist in our school district currently, we believe there's room for improvement, and we don't have those articulated in a current, well-defined curriculum management plan. So we just have completed a draft of that work, and we'll be working on that further second quarter. Again, all of our work that we're mentioning tonight, we'd just like to point out to you that we know and understand, first, it is student-centered, and we also want it to be implementer-friendly. We want to be mindful of our teachers who are doing the magic work every single day with our students, and our goal is to support our staff who support our students every single day. The other item here references the district leadership team and our learning together. Dr. Carpenter has introduced to us the notion of equity throughout our school district. So this first quarter, we had our first session with our district leadership team, which includes all building principals and directors across the school district, and we had, for the first time, a conversation related to equity and equality, and we spent time reflecting on what are those things that we believe we have done well related to equality, and what are those things that we believe we can do better for the benefit of students when we look through and plan through a lens of equity. And again, that occurred in September. So what about quarter two? So I've just referenced to you some of the big rocks, but here are some of the pieces that will happen, quite frankly, before winter recess, and we have our work cut out for us. So we know our building principals are all developers of teachers, and so we believe in leaders leading the learning, and they are going to be participating in some professional development around the notion of instructional strategies. We believe it's important for any of us that are instructional leaders to be in classrooms and be able to not only see the instruction, but be able to name it, understand why it's effective and beneficial, and then also the importance of a feedback to our teachers based on what we are seeing. And then in addition to, we will be working on this notion of an assessment audit. So in the ASR, if you'll remember, last year, we talked about a local assessment plan. The ASR calls for a local assessment plan, and we ourselves know that that's important to develop. But before we do that, it's important to understand what do we even have in place? What's hiding in nooks and crannies that perhaps we may be unaware of? So that work will be led by Dr. Kristi Barger. Again, it will just be the very early stages in second quarter in terms of just the planning for that. We'll be looking at school improvement plan design and what those look like across buildings and start the early work with Dr. Kephar and Dr. Sharp, and then the Instructional Operations Team, about what we as a district expect in our building improvement plans, so that those are all in much, much alignment with any adjustments that might be made to our strategic plan destination 2021. Some of the other bullet points there I've already referenced, those will just again be continuation of work from first quarter relative to the beliefs and principles work. I've referenced the policy revisions, and those will be ongoing. Already referenced the curriculum management plan, and of course, we want to make sure that we are communicating with our staff, and there are no surprises to our staff. So again, it's just the end of first quarter, our engines are really just getting revved up, if you will, and we will be working to devise a communication plan, what staff need to know and when, because again, we want to be mindful of our teachers. And then we will be working with, and I'll be working closely with Dr. Carpenter, to define an equity learning plan for our district leadership team. While it began this year, that work will become even more expansive next year, so we'll be developing that plan. And then there will be this draft of a notion of a three-year instructional plan that references that word framework that's in priority one as written. So that three-year plan will start to get drafted this first quarter, and then we will bring that to you in completion at the end of the school year. So a lot has happened since July 1. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Hedrick, who will discuss with you for priority number two.
Thank you. This priority, I'm not going to read it to you, but it talks about a comprehensive facility master plan, and really, I think most people, when they hear that, think it's about adding facilities. Well, that's not really the only thing that this comprehensive facility master plan really looks at, is going to look at how we use our current facilities, how can we better use our facilities to support the instruction, and some of the things that Dr. Collier has talked to you about, how can we, do we need to redesign our facilities to better support that instruction and classroom activity? So that's really kind of the scope of this, as well as looking at our needs based on our continued enrollment projections that take us out through the next 10 years. So this would be about a 10-year plan, looking at those pieces as they apply to our facility and how it supports instruction in the district. So some of the things that we've already completed is, we do utilize a demographer, applied economics, Rick Bramer is actually the person, he was in the district that week of August, the 21st to the 25th. He had an exit meeting with Dr. Carpenter and myself, just telling us some of the status of building within the district and certain parts of the district, and how it's changed from his visit here a year ago. We've also started with our administrative team, and Kyle Gurrell has been part of that as well, looking at our current building usage and really establishing what we call a program capacity, instead of just regular building capacity. If a room is being used for something other than a typical classroom where you can get 23 or 24 kids in there, but the capacity because of the use is only 10 students, we're looking at that building by building, classroom by classroom. We will have that, we've initiated that process with input from our building administrators. We will have that process, I'll refer that in a minute, but we'll have that process hopefully completed next week. So that's an important part, because that helps us look at how many students can be in a building, how many do we have in that building, and then as we look at our projected enrollment, that tells us where we might have some areas where we need to address sometime into the future. We've had, our superintendent's leadership team has completed a review of our comprehensive facility master plan, what our plan is and the process. We have provided our official September 27 enrollment numbers, which are the numbers that we report officially to the Department of Education. We've submitted those to our demographer, and he's working on those as well. And then also, one of the most probably exciting things for me personally was a presentation that Mr. Gurrell gave to our SLT in terms of 21st century learning spaces. And so you're thinking, well, what does that really mean? Well, that really, to put it really in perspective for you, probably the building we have that's closest to some of the concepts in 21st century learning is the MIC building, where we have flexible spaces, we're almost really trying to provide a plan, a facility that's flexible, that can meet different types of instructional needs, and really is designed to increase the learning for each student. So that's really what that's all about, and at some point, we hope that we can share that presentation with you. He did a great job getting that information to us. So where do we go from here? We will be putting out on the street for our community, parents, business members, our staff, anyone who might be interested in volunteering to serve on either the core planning team or the comprehensive facility master planning team, a much larger team that's going to work with a planning firm to help take us through this process over the next 10 to 12 months. So that survey will be out on the street next week, and we'll be advertising that in our typical strategies for marketing. We will then also, as I mentioned, we'll have our building capacity update completed next week. From that interest survey, we expect to get a 10-member core planning team put together with broad representation, and that team will help us in this next process I am about to talk about in terms of selecting or recommending a comprehensive facility master planning firm to take us through the process. We have an RFQ, a Request for Qualification, drafted, it'll be out on the street next week as well. We'll give them about a month to respond to that. During that time, we will have that core planning team convened and selected, kind of take them through what our expectations are for the next part of the process would be during the week of December the 4th, we will be doing interviews of firms that have submitted a proposal for us to consider their qualifications to be the vendor to take, or firm to take us through the process. So we will have that completed, that first week of December. We plan at this point to bring a recommendation to the board at the December board meeting for your consideration of that. We will also have during that time in December, the final enrollment report from our demographer, with all of that program, all that information updated out through the 27th school year. So we'll have that completed as well. We will, we expect the firm that's selected and that's approved by the board to really start their work, really hit the ground running right after the first of the year, and our expectation that we've already defined would be by next October, they will have completed their work. Now, along the way, we'll have lots of involvement from everyone in our community, in our school district, the board will get updates along the way, as well as our community, students, staff. So it'll be a very transparent and ongoing communication to make sure everyone, by the time that report is finalized, there won't be any surprises of what's in it. And that's my comments.
Members, I know that's a lot to digest. It would suggest that we really engaged around the priorities, but we do want this to be an opportunity to hear some voices, hear some questions, and kind of talk through where we are in terms of this work. Thoughts, comments, questions, concerns, Mr. President?
You want to have any comments or questions?
I do, outstanding from both of you ladies. But what is the general feeling, consensus, vibe of all of this to the DLT, District Leadership Team? Is everybody enthused? What's the feeling behind all of this? Are everybody excited about it? There's so much here. Very exciting, but can you give us a feel of like meetings, what's taking place, what's the vibe?
You know, I appreciate that question. I can share with you my experience with the teams I've been working with. Our folks are tremendous, everyone is incredibly engaged. Anytime you have that opportunity to pause in your work and really think about vision and where do we want to be headed, not just three years from now, but five, and what decisions are we making now that will affect our students 10 years from now, that's really powerful work and really creates some natural momentum and motivation. Are there hard decisions ahead? Absolutely. Do we know it benefits students? Absolutely. Do we wish it could all be done yesterday? Absolutely.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Julie?
Dr. Hedrick, on your team that you're going to be developing with the businesses and all that, I really want to make sure we get a lot of diverse people on there, just...
That's really our plan, to really minimize the number, really maximize the number of our community, parents, our business leaders. We'll have students, staff on that team, but really, that's our goal, to really have a very broad-based, and that larger team at this point, I'm thinking is going to be at least 30-some members. So it's going to be a fairly large team that's got a lot, really is going to have to make a commitment, because it's going to be a lot of work, there's going to be a lot of opportunity to learn, which I think is very exciting, but there also is going to be a lot of tough decisions that that team will have to work through as we try to move towards that comprehensive facility master plan.
Awesome, thank you.
Jackie?
Thank you. I have a question for each of you. Katie, Dr. Collier, I'll start with you. On your last slide, listing all the future actions, there was an element there that was around staff communications being initiated, and the date was December of 18. Will this be kind of a post, or is it this December? It was in chronological order, so I was questioning that.
Yes, thank you for catching that. Actually, it referred to this December. Likely, communication won't go out, we're still finalizing that, likely not out right before winter recess, but instead, we're looking at for sure, with certain... before winter recess, but instead, we're looking at for sure, with certainty, end of the year, broad communication to staff come April. We've planned that. But through our work, we've started to have some other conversation about, should some communication perhaps occur January prior to an April message that sheds light on the next school year? So we're in, again, in the development stages of that communication, would look for something potentially mid-year, and then a broader communication at the end of the school year that paints a broader instructional picture than what we might be able to do just at that mid-year break.
Great. Well, I'm sure there's a lot of interest, and that would be important to keep folks informed along the way. So that's wonderful.
Sure. And we know there are, there are staff who may not be aware of all the details of things that we've been working on now, and certainly we don't want anything to be surprised, even though our building principals do a tremendous job of communicating with staff. Having a message from the district is also important.
Very good. And then, Dr. Hedrick, my question was around the RFQ that you guys are going to be putting out on the street with the facilitators. What types of firms are typically identified for that kind of opportunity?
Well, based on the research that I've done, there's, they kind of fall into two kind of categories. A lot of them are architects. There's others that just do planning, different types of school planning. And so that's there, really from the research I've done, they kind of fall into either of those two, those groups. So we do think we will have both local and national interest in this RFQ at this point.
Dennis?
I would just, I would just again like to thank kind of what Phyllis said, the hard work. It doesn't amaze me, it's just, it's just so refreshing to know that, you know, Dr. Carpenter comes on July 1. We as board and as a planning team back in June, sat down and put these three priorities together, and the SLT and others have jumped on the bandwagon and are working very hard. And I know this community, there'll be a lot of stakeholder involvement, and I appreciate the hard work that everybody is, that is working on this at this time. Thank you again.
I just want to make one comment, that the continuous improvement process that we go through to, to keep our services to children current and effective is continuous, obviously. It, it goes on and on and on. There's never an end to that. And I think the, the issues that we've been facing in schools, at least within the last 10 or 15 years, is that the change of pace in society is so rapid, that we're having a hard time keeping up. And I appreciate all of the extra effort that you all have gone to, to try to keep us abreast of what's going on in our society, in our world, in our schools, so that our kids are ready for, for life outside of school. And I know it's, it, it is a never-ending process, and it seems like lately, since some of us go back a ways, that the process has kind of picked up its pace considerably. I know when I first started teaching, I used the same ninth grade English book that I used when I was in ninth grade. That doesn't happen anymore. So things are progressing at such a rapid pace that, that this process takes a great deal of people's time and effort, and I really do appreciate all that you all put into that.
So the only thing that I would add is, I'd be remiss if I did not mention the instructional operations team as I think about priority number one, and also the leaders in Dr. Hedrick's department as we think about priority number two. So Ms. Bologna, you raise a good question about the tenor, in terms of this work, and I've found it to be refreshing, in terms of going up and having some drop-in conversations with different individuals around the priorities. There's a clear sense of engagement. I mean, when I think about conversations in Dr. Barga's office and some of the places, there's clear engagement around the priorities in addition to the SLT. And I had the privilege of presenting alongside Dr. Collier during one of the leadership team meetings, or the district leadership team meeting. And that energy was refreshing, wasn't a lot of silence, sleeves were rolled up, and people were engaging. I think if I talk globally about one-on-one conversations with building leaders, there's a hunger for this level of clear direction and vision from the individuals I've spoken with. And the only thing I'm hoping, Dr. Collier, and Dr. Hedrick, is I don't turn any of these thoughts and ideas, and I won't, into a tailspin as I present the superintendent's 100-day report next month. So I think, on a more serious note, you'll see lots of alignment, and probably some of the opportunities that we unearthed there, you're seeing the beginning stages of some of those opportunities here.
Go, she had another.
Yeah, I do, I would like to just jump in and say that I saw the other day written somewhere, and I can't phrase it exactly, but it said, you know, you used, you said, you know, we want to, we want to get back to simple, we want to get back to the basics, let's get back to organizing here. And it said that if you really want to take a look at your life, put, write the three most important priorities down, and then build everything around it. And I believe that's what we've done, and we've taken the three, and we saw two of them tonight, so beautifully explained by both of you. But I'm just glad to see that we're taking it and putting it in not simpler terms, but in terms that are, use the least to say the most. And so, thank you for that. And I, I just really makes me happy to hear two things, belief and principles. And all of the work that we do every day, and the shuffling of the paper, and the picking up the Chromebooks, and this and that, it's nice to know that we're going back to beliefs and principles, and, and hearing that so, so commonly mentioned. And then the equity plan, you know, ever since Dr. Carpenter's arrived, has gotten me so excited. And I get asked on the street, what's this equity stuff? What's this equity about? People are talking about the equity plan, and so this is exciting, and I'm glad to hear everybody else is embracing it too as well, so.
Thank you, Board, for your comments, and Dr. Carpenter for your report, and Dr. Collier and Dr. Hedrick, appreciate that. The next portion of our meeting is our presentations and recognitions, and first on the list is our Lights On After School. On October 26th, we will celebrate Lights On After School, recognizing the importance of quality after-school programs in our standing before and after-school services, BAS, staff members. R7 BAS provides our families with tremendous benefits. Not only do children have a safe and caring environment within KC Cubbies, Kids Country, Three Links, and Summit Rise, our BAS programs promote academic, social, and physical development. There is growing evidence throughout the nation that children and youth who attend a quality after-school program do better in school while developing new skills and interests. Kristy Weber, before and after-school care nurse, will be representing our BAS staff. We'll say that my grandson goes to the PLE before-school program, and his grandmother and I would like for him to stay with us a couple of days a week, and it's getting harder and harder to pull him away from that program, because he really likes it. So we have to twist his arm to get him to come and see us two mornings a week, so. Our next presentation is National School Lunch Week. National School Lunch Week, October 9th through the 13th, gives us a perfect opportunity to thank our valuable Nutrition Services Department. Within our schools, Nutrition Services provides close to 3 million meals each year, a remarkable accomplishment. On a daily basis, our school cafeterias serve appetizing meals that appeal to our students while also meeting strict federal guidelines. Thanks to our Nutrition Services staff members, our students are more successful in school and able to do their best each day. Jane Hensler, Director of Nutrition Services, Lori Donella, Director, Coordinator of Nutrition Services, and Chris Maven, Coordinator of Nutrition Services Technology, will represent Nutrition Services. On behalf of the 180 staff in Nutrition Services that feed all those kids today. Our next one is National School Bus Safety Week. National School Bus Safety Week will be held October 16th through the 20th this school year. It's an excellent time for us to express our gratitude to R7 Transportation Department team members. R7 Transportation not only transports more than 13,000 students daily, but provides them with a start, a positive start and conclusion to their school day. Our Transportation Department employees work closely with parents and schools, partnering to create a safe and caring learning environment, while also teaching students important rules related to staying safe on the bus and at bus stops. Representing the Transportation Department tonight is Eric Slaver, Fleet Supervisor, Mike Walker, Mechanic, and also first-place winner of the Missouri Best Technician Competition, Rudy Rhodes, Driver and Site Team Chair, and Mike Sacker, Driver and Site Team Officer. We're very proud of our transportation team as they consistently receive an inspection rating in the high 90s. This year, however, they received a 100% rating. Linda, do we have any tonight?
We do not have any tonight, Bob. I would like to point out on your, at your dais place, there's a candle, and that was made by the Lee Summit High School Life Skills Class, and purchased by Kim Fritchie, who watched them do, make those for you, and so that's a little gift from Kim and the Life Skills Kids.
Well, thank the Life Skills teachers, one of whom I happen to know. Okay, we are at the point where we will talk about our board reports and meetings attended. Your Board of Education is very heavily involved in lots of other activities around our community besides just coming for one meeting on Thursday night once a month. And we've developed a portion of our agenda where we can report out on those various things that we've been attending. So I will allow us to do that, and then I think Jackie, I will start down on your end this time.
Thank you, Bob. I am, of course, engaged with the Government Relations Committee efforts for the board, and we didn't have much going on since we've last met in late September, but I anticipate a meeting next week with our friends at the Lee Summit Chamber and their Government Relations Team. And I have ongoing conversations with, with various members of our legislative delegation, and we've had very positive interactions with them in recent weeks.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes, really don't have much to report either. We do have our first all CAC meeting on Monday, October 23rd, at the MIC. I know that we had our steering committee meeting, that the participants are looking very much forward to having our meeting out there. And I can't give you the exact number, but we, there are three or four new members that have been approved to the, to the CAC, so some, some new additional faces that will, that will be good. The city, with all the building stuff going on, we've not had any TIF meetings since back in June when we had one. And in a little while, I'm going to give this long financial report. That's all.
Phyllis?
Yes, Ms. Kim Fritchie is at home recovering after sho...
Ms. Kim Fritchie is at home recovering from surgery. So she has asked that I step in and give the foundation report this evening, and I am doing this on behalf of her. I'm going to read some of this that Cheryl sent me. Our foundation's 21st Annual Race for the Future was a huge success, with over 966 runners, walkers, 74 dream partners, meaning those that dream about walking but don't do it, and 70 children who participated in the Kids Dash, and more than 75 volunteers. The fundraiser raised approximately $54,000. That's exciting. Drumroll, y'all know you're all wanting to know the elementary that we're at the most. Westview Elementary took first-place honors in the Staff Student R7 Participation Challenge and received a $1,000 school grant from the Lee Summit Educational Foundation. Woodland Elementary came in second and will receive a $500 grant. Hazel Grove and Pleasantly Elementary received third and fourth place honors, and will each receive a $250 school grant. Special thanks to the Transportation Department for having over 20% of their staff participate in the race, and to our SLC, Stansberry Leadership Center employees who had a 22% participation rate. Very good. There's lots going on, and I'd love to be able to show this link, but I probably should have done this earlier. She sent me a link that you can look up and see all of the great photos and videos of the Race for the Future. I might maybe send this over to Amy and see if I can put it on at the end, possibly. But foundation does great work in this community. I know now that the race is over. Cheryl will probably breathe for about 30 seconds, and then she'll be moving on to Taste of Lee Summit. So they do a lot of work. Recently went to MSBA, had the best MSBA that I think I've enjoyed in many years. I attribute that a lot to this outstanding panel of school board members here. We really had a great time. We did some bonding, that was just wonderful to see each other outside of the dais. Kim Fritchie and I, hello Kim, I know she's watching. She and I serve as an MSBA delegate, and Bob and Kim rewrote MSBA language to support teacher tenure, and I'm saddened to say that this did not pass. They did not allow us to submit that. So I looked at Kim and I said, Kim, next year, we're going to do it again, because this is really important for our teachers. It's a, you know, teachers work long, long, hard hours. I was a former teacher, many are sitting here, sometimes with little this at times. And so it's a pat on the back when after five years of teaching in our district on the sixth contract, they can go, yes! And they know that longevity is in the district. It's also a win-win for our kids, because it's a proven statistic that consistency in the schools is key to the children's success of knowing their teachers are all going to be there year to year. So we really are going to champion this again, we're not giving up on it. I told Kim I would work with her, we would campaign, we might enlist Jackie to help us lobby a little bit over there. But anyway, Kim Fritchie did present this on behalf of the district. She did a wonderful job. We did have some schools that were supporting it, but all in all, it did not pass. It didn't lose by a landslide. I can't quite tell you, I think it was like 82 to 70, something like, it was very close. So it was not a landslide, but we're going to bring it back again. And then Teacher of the Year, I'll be traveling to Jefferson City a week from Monday night to support our Brad Rackers, who's our Lee Summit Teacher of the Year. Always loved talking about the teachers that are awarded this. We have the best teachers anywhere, and it's, it's just a great opportunity to celebrate them on a state level. I see our wonderful director of that, that program out here, Laura Maxwell, who does a wonderful job getting these teachers prepared. So I think that's really all I want to say, except I am a huge fan of Nutrition Services, everything that you do. I just am in awe of how many children you feed every day, and you do it very well. So, thank you.
Julie?
Well, I promised Kim Fritchie that I would let everyone know where she was, but, so we all know she had shoulder surgery, I got to say that really slow. She will be working at John Knox Village this Saturday, I don't, I don't know why, but we're, I'm going to move on into Lee Summit Cares, and she'll be working the prescription drug take-back. And so donate anything you want at John Knox Village, the Police Department, Jackson County Sheriff, Lee Summit Medical Center in St. Luke's, so. And then, that is the Saturday, 10 to 2. So, and then that is the Saturday, 10 to 2. And then Holly Festival is at Campbell, November 11th and 12th. So come on out and get all your Christmas shopping done. I'll have a booth out there. They're having a new, it's usually arts and crafts, but they're having a new chick event guys can come to. But that'll be fun. I'll have a booth out there, so come out and see me. I'll have some candy or something. And I think that we did have a lot of fun at MSBA, but my, and I learned a lot. But I think that one of my highlights was listening to the speaker, Stone Phillips. I think you may know him from Dateline. He is from the St. Louis side of Missouri boy. Went through public school, went to Yale. I think, was it, did he say he was his quarter, the quarterback?
Yes.
Okay. And I was, I was enamored by him. I thought he was so cool. But, but we did have a lot of bonding time, too, so that was good. And that is my report. Did I tell you that Kim had surgery?
Adam? From MSBA, picked up on a lot of, a lot of great things from all the breakout sessions. I think more so just from our conversations, had some good ideas going. But a couple of things from the sessions I attended, which I don't think anyone else was in that I, that I wanted to share, was the concept of a CBIP, so Continuous Board Improvement Plan. So we have our board selfie eval in that process that we were kind of working on, on an ongoing basis. But talking about how it was aligned with CSIP and in particular, board priorities. But when we evaluate ourselves, keeping it in lockstep with, with those other things seemed like a great concept for us to pursue. And then in a separate session, I think it was Sedalia, sorry if the district that put on this work session is watching, and I didn't remember who it was, but they sent a bunch of their teachers out essentially on a bunch of field trips to businesses in surrounding areas. I think they called it STEAM, and I wish I could remember what the acronym was, but similar to STEM. I know we do a lot of stuff like that for our kids. They see a lot of things. But, you know, would like to talk about how much our teachers, even in other subject matter that might not be the SDA curriculum, but down through the elementaries and all, all subjects, getting them out, see what different workplaces are like, what the needs are. Thought that was a really cool idea. They rode a bus, did real work experiences while they were there. Very neat, neat concept. And then, like I said, I think a lot of my most valuable time was with these, these board members here. And I know we talked about having a little more, and especially Julie. I think that's what that look was for. I know we have agendas and we have to talk about, you know, certain topics, but just looking at some way for us to have more forum oriented, even more of an unstructured dialogue, just kind of about whatever's on our minds. Hope we have a chance to figure out some way to execute on that. Finance Dennis has got the honor here. He said it was a long report. I just want to point out, this is the shortest report that we've ever had, and it just happens to be, happens to be his turn, which I think is fishy, but. I'm really excited for CFMP. I might be alone in that, but I think it's my favorite document that we have and that we work on. So I'm really excited and geared up to get that process started. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, Adam. MSBA is the top of my agenda in the things that we did this, since our last board meeting. Was an outstanding session this year. Many times when a district of our size attends, and like most of the rest of the school districts that are there are way smaller than we are, sometimes you don't necessarily always feel like the things that you go to apply so much to a district of 18,000 students when the presenter has 500 students in their district. But this time, they did an outstanding job. Got some really great pieces from a lot of different folks. Several that stood out for me. Park Hill did a outstanding presentation on student health, which is obviously a great concern to us currently, as it always is, but even more so now. And one of the things that they brought up, which I thought was so good, was just to ask two questions. The first one being, "What are we doing that makes things worse?" And the second being, "What are we doing that makes them better?" And I thought that was a, that was something really good to bring back for us to think about. I also sat in on a North Kansas City presentation, and this is the second time I've heard this. I heard it once right after I came on the board, and it was a proposal then, and this was their extended school year. And what they've done is they added 31 days to certain schools where the students were struggling and falling behind during the summer. And they have now had two years' worth of data to look at, to see how that works, and it has been an enormous success. So another thing that I thought was worth stealing from somebody else if we can do it. So those were the main things that, that I remember. Oh, we had a great speaker on family involvement who was, who was absolutely hysterical, but at the same time brought up so many good points that you go, "Oh, man, I hadn't thought about that." So a lot of good stuff from that, from that four days, and also a great opportunity for us to talk and bond as a, as a group, have some social time, which we don't get very often. So we really enjoy that. Those are our reports. And then at this point, it will be time for us to move to our finance reports. So Mr. Smith, you have the honors of reading this very short report.
Thank you. Investments, investments through September totaled approximately 8.83.1 million. Revenue and expense report, operating revenues and expenses are comparable percentages to wise to the prior school year and within the expected budget estimates. Other finance issues that we discussed, or was in meeting was 2017-18 amended budget. Amendments to the fiscal year 18 budget are needed to account for increased prior year ending balance, additional revenue from additional assessed value, final tax rate, and adjustments to expenditure categories increased since the June budget approval. The amended budget shows current year expenses in excess of current year revenue in the operating funds by approximately $1 million, resulting in a projected year-end fund balance of $58.2 million, or 28.45%. MIC change order number 14. Change order number 14 includes numerous items required to complete the project, including owner-directed and design changes. The largest expense in the, in the change order is related to numerous electrical work orders to address needs identified during furniture installation, city requirements, and other miscellaneous electrical requirements. The change order includes several credit items. The overall change order increase is $31,331.17 within the original budget resources. Construction and maintenance update. Kyle Gorel updated the status of the Woodland Sewer and the remaining projects authorized in the 2015 bond. When appropriate, Mr. President, I will have two actions to request.
You may proceed.
All right. First one is 6.02, to approve the transfer of $2,430,829.73 from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Second? Hey, we have a motion, a second, to transfer funds from the revenue, general revenue fund to the special fund. Do we have any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second one is 6.03, move to approve the treasurer's report and payment of the bills.
Second? Hey, we have a motion, a second, to approve the treasurer's report and payment of the bills. Do we have any discussion or questions on that? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And 6.04 is to approve the budget, the amended budget. Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, board members, we have our amended budget ready for approval, and I think Dr. Hedrick's going to take us through a brief series of six slides to give the board a little more context for the amendment.
Thank you very much. Wanted just to provide you some information in regards to the budget amendment. First of all, we are at the end of the fiscal year. We are still in the process of working on 1617. They started the audit this week. So the beginning fund balances carried over are the unaudited one, but they are about $1 million higher than what we projected back in June when we presented the preliminary budget to you for 1718. So I wanted to point that out. As well as, the beginning balance has an additional $900,000 in it that we transferred from the Health Insurance Reserve Fund that we talked with the board about back, if you remember, back in March, which really supported the board's decision to increase salaries pretty significantly for all of our staff this year, about an average of 3.5%. So that change is also reflected in the beginning fund balance. And then on the revenue side, you know from our last month's meeting, we had an assessed value total increase of about 6.5%. That's a little bit higher than we budgeted in June. We budgeted around 6.24. So we've incorporated that change into our revenue budget at this point in time. And that really results in about an additional $1.6 million in revenue, all really due to the assessed value increase. And as you, as you recall from last month, we had about a $24.4 million new construction increase, which those factors reduced our tax rate by almost 12 cents. And I think the important thing is here is really the strong economic background that these numbers represent. The district's had another good year of assessed value increases. Our new construction remains strong. So both positive things for the district overall. I wanted to show you, these are in our enrollment numbers as they currently exist. These will be the projections that Mr. Braemer will be updating. But as you can see through, beginning in 2006 to what we're projecting at this point at least, 2026, a pretty significant increase in terms of total student enrollment. So the numbers on this year's budget are based on those projections that we have at this point in time. Want to talk to you a little bit about, I just mentioned the increase in the local property tax from the assessed value. But really, when you consider our total revenue budget, we probably have about 50 categories of revenue that we budget every year. But really, I call them the three big, and they're our property tax, our state aid basic formula, and then Proposition C, it's a 1% statewide sales tax. Those three categories of revenue make up 87% of our operating revenue. And if you think about it, all three of those are tied, again, back to how healthy our economy is. So very important for us to keep that on our radar as we look at not only this budget year, but our budget projections out into the future. I've included the increases in those areas. A total on our property tax from last year, about 4.2 million. And Prop C is increasing. That's a number that's provided to us on a student basis, so it is related to how many kids are enrolled. So we're projecting at this point about a $400,000 increase. Moving to the state aid piece, you'll notice that the state adequacy target listed here with full funding that was projected last year was at a rate of $6,241 per student or per ADA. Our budget includes an estimate of 6,200. We felt like as we approached this fiscal year, the state may have some difficulty fully funding the formula. So we were conservative, I would say, in estimating the 6,200. For comparison purposes, I've put the September state adequacy target was at 6,199. So we're pretty close to that estimate. Last June, for that final fiscal year, it was at 6,198. And so you can see from that funding level why we're only projecting about a $70,000 increase in total basic state aid formula. Because we're basically funding, funding, budgeting the same state adequacy target that we got last year. And then our federal funding pretty much remains flat in terms of dollars and percentage-wise in the budget. And so this chart just kind of shows you that breakout in terms of about 64% of the budget is really local. About 2% is county money, about 30%, 30.5% state aid, and then a 4% federal money. Moving on to the expenditure side of the budget, these are, this information represents salary improvements that the board approved back in March. It was a total of about $5.2 million increase to our expenditures for salaries. So, and this just provides the information in terms of what those looked like per our salary schedules, that, the four salary schedules that we have in the district. We also, another big part of our expenditure budget in terms of salary and benefits is additional FTE, again, that the board so graciously approved in multiple, at different times during this last fiscal year for, for the 1718 budget. So you can see over the fiscal years FY13 to FY18, we've added 197.81 FTE, which really is in excess of the number of FTE that had previously been cut from 2008 until 2013. So we've added back all of those positions plus, not the, maybe the positions, but the number of people plus some. So again, it's about, with some redirected resources, a net add of about 1.1 million in additional FTE onto the budget this year. This chart really just shows us where the expenditures are located on our total expense budget this year of $290 million. I'm going to this chart because this gives you really a much better idea of where those expenditures are without our debt service payments that were reflected in the other chart. So you can see between salary and benefits, that's almost 80% of our operating budget for the staff that we have in the district. So, and those other areas, purchase services, those are things like our, some of our utilities for water and sewer, and those kinds of expenditures that you would typically have just operationally. And then materials and supplies or textbooks, software, those kinds of things that are consumable. And then some, 5% of the budget is for equipment. So with that, those factors included in the budget estimates, we did increase the budget on the expenditure side slightly for a couple of things. In one area, in the bond fund, the bond resources we had at June 30th were about $1.3 million higher than I had estimated they would be. So that's included in this version of this amended budget we're going to ask you to approve this evening. And then in the other areas, mostly in the operating fund, that was increased for the additional positions and buses for the early childhood program that you approved also a few board meetings ago. So those have been included in this budget. The ending fund balance, as we mentioned, is we projecting now at about $58.2 million and about 28.45. This chart kind of gives you that historical picture of kind of where we were back in 2008, '09. And that red line, that's that minimum fund balance that's calculated at 15%. As you recall, maybe from our previous conversations, that that really is the minimum number of, amount of fund balance that we need as we get into the months of November and December, which is our lowest fund balance. Because since we're, you know, 60% of our budget, 63% is really tied a lot to property tax, which we don't get until the months of December and January, we're using that fund balance to fund our monthly expenses during the months of July through December. So this kind of gives you some perspective of where we were and the work by lots of different individuals to get that fund balance to a level where now, as we're spending that down to some degree, we're doing that in a very planned and systematic way, and always looking out, not only the decisions we make this one year, but how they affect future years. Because that's always a concern when we're talking about reoccurring expenses. We have to plan for those in the fund balance. So I think that is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for Judy? Adam?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hedrick. I mean, this was a conversation we had yesterday in Finance Committee, so I just want to kind of save some of my thoughts for the, for the rest of the board. So we're, I think, in a pretty great spot right now in terms of really healthy fund balances, favorable economic conditions. Now I'll be a downer. Say, got a lot of kids that are probably going to come to school here over the next few years. We're going to have to start stacking some bricks at some point. Economic conditions won't always be this favorable. So I, I'm, now is a great time for us to kind of build war chest. Not to say we can't take care of things right in front of us today, but it might be easy for us to get overly optimistic currently. Maybe not, maybe not you.
Not me, but some people.
Yeah, I know. And I have a note here. It's, we always have a nice, nice conservative estimates, and so the surprises are usually positive, like we had recently, which is, I think, the right approach.
Yes.
But just as I look through things, I'll kind of have that lens on. I always do, if you didn't already know that, but I'll continue to, and I just want to be ready for CFMP and have a good foundation to build on from there. And I just appreciate all the work that you've done getting us, getting us ready for the next steps.
Thank you, Adam. I believe that we have a motion that we need to have made here.
I've moved that the board approve the amended budget as presented.
Okay, we have a motion in a second that the board approved the amended budget as presented. Is there any more discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we are moving to our next portion of the agenda, which are our items for decision, our first consent agenda. If you have your copy in front of you, you can see that the items that are mentioned there, these are routine items that have been shared with the board ahead of time. So I will entertain a motion for this consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda item 7.01 to 7.06 as presented.
Second. Hey, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or question on any of the consent agenda items? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item eight is our second consent agenda, and this ratifies contracts that are over $5,000. And again, these are contracts which had to be signed prior to the board meeting and are being ratified by the board. Again, the board has access to this information and can ask questions about these types of contracts as they come about. There generally are not very many of these, and it appears that there are only two, which is a good thing. We don't want a whole lot of these, so I will entertain a motion on this item as well.
I move to ratify the contracts over $5,000 as presented in items 8.02 through 8.03.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there any discussion or questions on any of these items? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And our last one, our last contracts one is our contracts that are over $5,000. And our first one there, Dr. Carpenter, do you have?
Yes, sir. Dr. Gates, please come forward and share as it relates to System Center Configuration Manager implementation.
Yeah, thank you. This agenda item is simply actually what you're approving is a statement of work through AOS, through a consortium contract through the Greater Kansas City Cooperating School District. But what you're approving is a statement of work for them to, an engineer to come in and work with our team to implement this Microsoft product, System Center Manager, which will basically help us automate as we move to Windows 10 in the spring.
Okay, I would entertain a motion on this, please.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve, I move that the board approve the statement of work for professional services through AOS for the SCCM implementation at an estimated cost of $51,950.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I think we are ready for our personnel report.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, at this time, we will have Dr. Miller, he has his one last opportunity to amend his report. And so we're going to give him this one last opportunity to make a report amendment. If not, we'll reluctantly let him present as printed.
Very well said, Dr. Carpenter. Much appreciated, but I believe the report will stay as presented.
The mic wasn't on.
So it's unofficial.
Once I give you every question, I'm more happy to answer them.
Well, I just want to make a comment for those in the audience watching at home, that what we are wanting to, hoping to see happen, but it didn't, is that we are sad and excited at the same time for our very own Dr. Jeff Miller, who is retiring June 29th, I think is your last day, is that correct? So we were hoping that really was just eyesight. I was having issues, but I guess that's not the truth. So I wanted everybody to know out there.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something. I had, Jeff, I don't remember exactly when you came to the district, what?
2000.
2000. I had the opportunity for a couple, three years to work with Jeff. It was an honor. We, we, you kept Pleasantly Middle School online, I kept trying to keep Bernard Campbell online. But I learned a lot from you, even though I'm just a few years older than you. But I really appreciate what you have, appreciate what you have done for this district. You've left a great footprint here. I did notice though, a while ago, I have to look at the Missouri retirement system. I don't know, maybe you could help Janice out on, when it comes to picture time after retirement without, without getting into, you know, your retirement hours, problems that you might have. But again, thank you so much for what you have given to this school district.
Let's go ahead and get a motion on the table, please.
Okay, I move to approve the personnel transactions as presented and contracts issued.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. One other comment, and I can't say anything more than what everybody else has already said, but Jeff has been a special person to me as well in my role as both a principal and then my role as a board member. And I can't, I can't put into words how much I appreciate that. Okay, we have a motion in a second on the table. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have one presentation tonight from the Facility Services Annual Program Evaluation. So Kyle?
What do we do in the facilities department? Our first priority, as you know, is that we support learning environments. And it is really exciting to work with such a great group of people who all support the mission of our department. This is the org chart, that's the boring look at all the people. So I decided to give you a closer look at some of the great people that are in our department and some of the projects that they've implemented over the school year. Our facilities, we're up to 3.3 million square feet now, now that we added the MIC building. And of course, still growing, and the CFMP process will determine how we handle that Our budget, we're very thankful for the support we've had in facilities. It has allowed us to attract and retain really great people, as you'll see tonight. 212 and a half people, we're still looking for that half guy, but he's running around somewhere. And, but as you'll see, we've got a great fleet and are very well supported. Our objectives, we support learning by doing a lot of things. And one of the things I'm the most proud of in our department is providing clean and healthy learning environments for kids. I'll show you tonight some of the ways that our department does that. The third and fourth item there are going to be the two emphasis for the year, the comprehensive facility master plan team, and also working with 21st century learning environments, something that I have a real deep passion for. Our responsibilities, all the obvious things. If it's part of our physical environment, minus technology, we don't get into that, then we're there to, to help fix it. So the two halves of our department, we have two assistant directors. On the maintenance half, our assistant director is Bruce Gibson. And if you guys haven't met Bruce, we have to get you introduced. He is an outstanding guy. K through 12 Lee Summit guy, graduated from Lee Summit High School and has a great background, one of the most knowledgeable people on mechanical systems that she could ever want to work with, and is deeply passionate about his job. He works in all areas from grounds, HVAC, carpentry, electrical, and plumbing. And we work through a work order system. In the last fiscal year, we completed 7,873 work orders. So it always surprises me every year when I go back and look that number up. That averages 151 a week or 32 a day. Different shops that Bruce supervises, we've got supervisors that are really at the top of their game, and I'm so proud of these guys. Roger Anderson is our carpentry shop supervisor. He started July 1, and you may have known Dave Taylor. Dave Taylor was the district for a long time, and recently took a position as Director of Facilities for Pleasant Hill School District. And so Roger is an absolute gem and comes with a wealth of experience. He handles everything physical, doors, hardware, keys, roofing, flooring. And we tell Roger, if it doesn't have water, air, or electricity running through it, it's fallen in his, in his lap at some point. So some of the great projects that Roger has done this year, quiet rooms, we've had safe rooms around the district for many years, and these guys have really taken that on as, as a mission to develop them across the district. We had the athletic department come to us last year with the idea of a judo floor to help the wrestling kids in practices. They get slammed hundreds of times in a, in a wrestling practice. So it's a foam and plywood cushion judo floor. So our guys, through their material purchase, worked with them and constructed that floor in the wrestling room at Lee Summit High School this year. Greenwood's Courtyard was a fun project for them. They did the screen wall around it for the PTA. And just some other fun projects, they built some Hanta's tables for Summit Lakes Middle School, and that's a fun little board they did at Richardson Elementary School. Next shop, our electrical group. Matt Tillman is our supervisor. He's been here for about two years now and has just been an absolute great guy to have in our department, so knowledgeable. Power, lighting, intercom, elevators, fire alarm, there are plenty of opportunities when it comes to electrical in the district. Biggest project we just did, we did in-house an LED retrofit at the Aquatic Center for their lighting. It has five to six-year payback and provides better lighting. Really excited about it. Quasi has got a huge smile on his face. Installed 41 outlets this year for projectors, so lots of new projectors getting bought all the time, and we support the technology department and the buildings and being able to supply the power. The mobile classrooms at Lee Summit West and Hazel Grove, our guys installed all the secondary power from the transformers to the buildings for those units. And there's all kinds of crazy lights around this district that are really difficult to get to, and they always find a way. So I really appreciate the work they do to get to some of those places. Grounds shop, Mark Greenstreet. Mark is a tremendous guy, a citizen of the United States. He'll tell you, God bless America, every time you meet him. Mowing, playgrounds, landscaping, athletics, and basically everything outside the four walls of the building, our grounds department takes care of. Constantly working on field rejuvenation, they do an amazing job of keeping our fields in safe and playable condition. Lee Summit West Courtyard, if you haven't been through there, they built landscape walls and redid all of the beds. Pleasantly Middle School Monument sign, looks great, redid the base and rock. And they've worked on landscape bedrock all across the district. You've probably noticed it in many of our sites. And every time they have free time, we keep rock on our site, and they're out getting rid of mulch and making a lower maintenance solution for themselves. HVAC, Mr. Dave Reynolds, this guy's a genius. He really is. And HVAC controls and the systems are so complicated these days, and we have got an amazing technical staff. The building automation system, humidity and temperature control and energy management. Some of the projects that they've done, exhaust system at Lee Summit High School for the welding equipment that they bought. We installed a variable frequency drive on the pool pump at the Aquatic Center. This project had a six-month payback. We're just making money now, and it allows us to slow down the pool pump at night when the pool's not being used. Is set up computerized shelter-in-place shutdown, so that building staff, in the event, in the event of an external emergency, they can just on the computer shut down all the mechanical equipment in their building. And so we're really excited for that, and for some reason, we seem to need that about once every other year, so. Kiln safety controls, this is the kiln at Campbell Middle School, and the guys have worked out a way to interlock the fans, exhaust, and occupancy lights to the kiln power. And they also have temperature controls so that if the temperature of the room gets up close to where a fire sprinkler is going to go off, it shuts the kiln down. Really amazing safety feature, and the art staff has been very appreciative of their involvement, helping them control the equipment. Our plumbing shop, Jeff Kraus, master plumber and can fix just about anything, an incredibly knowledgeable guy. He do all of our fixture maintenance, irrigation, backflows, fire sprinklers. Jeff and his guys in the bond issue installed 10 backflow preventers. We spent $40,000 on the equipment, and I don't even want to think about how much it would have cost to contract that out. They did it all in-house and did an amazing job. They have a really, really skilled staff on our plumbing shop. And all through the year, they're doing water heater replacements, tank replacement, and keeping our equipment renewed. Moving on to the custodial side of our department, Paul Sharp is our assistant director. And Paul has come to the district, he's been here two years now, and with a wealth of knowledge. He had a long career at KU Med Center, was at Blue Valley School District for a long time. And when it comes to clean, Paul knows clean, and I really appreciate that about him. He supports our lean, our clean and healthy learning environments, our clean, our team cleaning and green cleaning initiatives, those are tongue twisters, and also the training initiatives that we've had. Bernard Davis is our evening supervisor. If you haven't hung out with Bernard, you're missing out, because he is just one of the best guys to, to be around and does an amazing job coordinating our evening staff.
Where's he tonight?
I think Bernard's home watching the Chiefs game. I'll tell you honestly, Bernard told me, Kyle, I'll be there with you. I'll go if you want. No, I wanted to mess around with him, but I didn't. So some of the green cleaning initiatives, healthy indoor learning environments, that is our priority. We use microfiber cleaning cloths so that there's no cross-contamination. We adopt a philosophy of using the least aggressive means of cleaning first. And that starts with cleaning with ozonated water through our Lotus Tressano units. And we were able to finish the retrofitting of the district through the bond issue of those units. We also host dry clean all of our carpet. It is 100% natural and no water is introduced into the carpets. We've been host dry cleaning carpets here for a long time, and it's great for the indoor air quality. Many, many years ago, the district allowed Many, many years ago, uh, the district allowed us to hire a trainer and that's Sandy Cruz. Sandy will keep you in line. She is an amazing lady. And she, when you want to hire somebody for a trainer, you want to hire Sandy Cruz. She's awesome. And she keeps our entire apartment in order. Um, in so many ways, as you can see, um, we have so much staff turnover that to maintain good and effective processes, you've got to have somebody full-time keeping them trained on the right way to do the work. Our kivak systems are a big part of that. Um, we disinfect our restrooms every single night, um, with a kivak system. They're sprayed down and cleaned, they're cleaner than any of our restrooms at home, I'd like to think. Um, and you will not go into a restroom in Lee Summit School District and have a, a foul odor unless it just occurred. All right, I'm, I'm sorry, I was. Our vacuum systems, um, we've moved to a lot of battery power vacs. And, uh, a lot of our vacuums, we're now buying with HEPA filters. So, we're not just recirculating dirty air back into the buildings. Um, a couple of new things we bought, um, after MIC building opened, that we're going to use at all of our buildings too. Um, a, an RODI water cleaning system so that you can, from the ground, um, clean windows outside the building. Um, and also a space vac, I kind of love this, this picture. Um, pole with a vacuum and a camera on it so that we can clean all those high ledges. Um, it's good for people. We don't have to, um, put people on lifts and clean all those high ledges. And I can't understate the impact that this, this group of people has on the, this district. Um, our building managers are a professional group of people. And I am really proud to work with these guys and gals. Um, they are a, uh, really our first line of defense, um, for everything that happens interacting with people in our buildings, um, on a day-to-day basis. So, a few of the projects, um, in finishing up the bond issue and, um, in our capital projects, we were able to do some great things at Lee Summit High School that have had some, um, really good reviews. We, um, redid the B-building corridors, uh, with epoxy. Redid the gym floor in B-building. And, uh, really a great cosmetic improvement. Pleasantly Middle School, a similar project. Um, the logo at their front door, if you guys haven't been in yet, is really a nice statement for their entry. Um, the cafeteria and kitchen have both been, um, renovated, um, at least on the, the finishes, new ceilings and floors. And the corridors also got new epoxy. Mason Elementary School, um, this completed, after my presentation last year, the new gym. The kids at Mason finally know what it's like to play in a full-size gym. They couldn't believe how big it was. And then, of course, this summer, we added two classrooms at Mason. And, uh, that helps them with their increased growth. Lee Summit Elementary. That was when, when we, uh, tore the, tore everything out of their cafeteria. That's that green paint that everybody got from the prisons back in the 50s and 60s. And that's what their cafeteria looks like today. It's such a great improvement and the kids have been so excited to, um, to have that space. Um, that's their kitchen, that was the kitchen, we tore it out. Little tiny cracker box, and that was used for the servery too, which is what their problem was. All the kids had to come through the kitchen to get their food. So, the new kitchen, um, is just a cooking space now. And the, um, right outside the kitchen, we created a serving line. So, now the kids have their own space to pick up food and the kitchen ladies have their place to do the cooking. One of the most impactful projects we did this summer was replacing the rooftop units on Lee Summit Elementary. They now have full humidity control in their building, um, out of these units and has been a really significant improvement to their indoor air quality. Great project through the bond issue. A lot of kitchen equipment at both Hazel Grove and Lee Summit Elementary, new freezers and coolers. And then also replaced, um, numerous pieces of equipment inside the kitchens. Trying to move quick here. Highland Park Elementary. Again, more corridor epoxy. It's been a really exciting improvement for their facility. That was the front door entry when you walked into Highland Park, um, last year. It was not very inviting. Um, and our guys did this project. We tore it out and opened it up, bought new furniture. Um, this was approved through the non-allocated capital projects team. That was the view looking the other way in their kitchen, or in their office. Um, now it's opened up, new carpet, new ceilings. Um, they're really excited and the, the public has really appreciated the, the more inviting entry. Carpet improvements, we were able to re-carpet Richardson's library. Um, carpeting a library is never an easy thing because there's a lot of work and moving. But, um, and Laura Maxwell has been a great partner in creating some 21st century learning environments that are really exciting for kids. We do the easy part, we just paint and put some carpet down and then she makes some really amazing places for kids. Did a lot of classroom carpet this summer. Good improvements all across the district. Resilient athletic flooring at Highland Park, Trail Ridge and Underwood. This is vinyl-surfaced cushion athletic flooring. Um, a good, safe place surface for kids. And, uh, we're all excited to continue to move this around the district. We now have five gyms, elementary gyms with this flooring in it. Did some other miscellaneous epoxy improvements. Uh, we did Seer Creek's, uh, nurse's office. It had carpet in it, which I really couldn't believe. Um, and then we did some restrooms at Hawthorne Hill and Metal Lane. In case you guys hadn't heard, we did have one other project this, last year that, um, that opened up. Um, that was our Missouri Innovation Campus. You know, what an amazing, exciting project to be a part of. Worked on it for almost three years from the start of our planning. Um, and so tonight, I know you guys have heard all about it, but I just wanted to show you a few pic, pictures of, uh, the finished product. This main commons has really turned into a great gathering place for kids. Um, you see their faces light up, they're excited to be there. Um, and it's also turned into a learning spot. Um, I walked in and kids were throwing gliders down the main hall. And, um, there was a kid that actually threw a glider and hit the opposite end, hit the door on the other end of the, the commons. So, pretty cool activity for their aerospace program. The department commons, I walk through all the time and see kids creating their own environments, um, creating space to learn and sit and gather. Um, it just creates a level of excitement that you can't, you can't quantify. I've found kids just hanging out and just doing their thing. It's, um, really an amazing learning environment. And that is an oatmeal bowl sitting there on that table. Not that I'm encouraging oatmeal, but doesn't it just tell you the comfortability that these kids have at their school? That they're just bringing their breakfast with them, they're just, they want to get there early and, and do what they're doing. The learning environments are innovative, they're flexible and they're exciting. And so, it's, um, really been a pleasure to work on this project. And it's just beginning, you know, to, uh, to gain the attention that it's going to get. Close out, what I want to do is, um, show you guys a time lapse of video. We had a, uh, a webcam on the construction trailer throughout construction. And the video, of course, in itself is not very fun to watch because it got blown over and it got knocked down and it was all kinds of things. So, what we did is we gave all the video to Sean Harrell, who's the digital, digital media teacher at, uh, MIC. And Sean put this incredible video together, pieced together the, the right pieces and I just wanted to share it with you tonight. Just one example of the amazing, uh, work that happens out at MIC. It's a, uh, really fun place to be. This is who we are. We'd love to see you sometime, come by the facilities building, uh, we'll give you, we were through our dusty workshops. In conclusion, um, of course, we just have to thank the, the great group of people that we have in our department, um, but also the great departments that we work with. Um, this is an amazing experience to work with such a collaborative group of people, I mean, district-wide. And so, that's what really makes it, makes it work. Um, but I'd be remiss if I didn't throw these ladies into the mix. These three ladies, Randy, Jill and Amber, they keep us all together. And they do our accounting, our payroll, uh, manage outside building use. Um, they are, uh, just really a, an integral part of the, uh, the great environment that we have in our office, so. With that, my presentation is over. I welcome any questions you guys might have.
Julie?
Thank you so much, those are great. I'm hoping that the pictures that you show and the YouTube, and I know Janice isn't here, but I hope that we can get those out on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, whatever we do, and maybe our schools because I, I think the average citizen, maybe that doesn't even have kids in school, needs to see the updates we've made to Mason and, and, you know, all, all the schools, but mostly those older schools. But anyway, that's my only comment and very nice presentation, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for Kyle? Plus?
I, I feel the need for a standing ovation. Well, I really do, I, I really feel the need for a standing ovation because I think that was a great. The reason I say that is because wow, I'm like with Julie right here, we got to get, get that out here so everybody sees that because we have a lot of people in our community that lived here, her dad, her parents, my parents, for a long, long time. And they're always asking, what's the shape of that school in these days? You know, and it's so great to say, it looks brand new, looks better than brand new. So, again, what is, I asked Dennis and, you know, he's, usually I always turn to him, he knows everything. We don't know what a Hantus table is.
You know, Dr. Carl, Dr. Carlson, would you like to tell them what Hantus is?
I'd be happy to. Hantus is a game that was created, uh, well, I won't tell you the whole story how it was created, but, uh, long ago, but essentially you take four tables, these tables are pitched towards each other. Students take a tennis ball and a team of four, think of a four-square or round-robin game where they, they had two hits with the ball and then they hit the ball off the opponent and try to knock the ball off the table or make it where it can't be played or back. Uh, the game was actually designed years ago, not at Lee Summit, by students that were in detention. Who were able to use a tennis ball and four tables to play a game, but real quick, put it away and sit down. But it has evolved into a game that, uh, our PE teachers teach, implement. The tables can be quite pricey. And our facilities crew, as you can see, there's a specialized approach to making a Hantus table. That teardrop shape, the angle, so they're pitched to play each other. And, um, our, uh, facilities crew has been able to, uh, set that up and, and do it for, uh, students in the schools. The kids have a blast and I encourage you, uh, on a Hantus day to, or very privileged, go to Summit Lakes and, uh, the kids will love to play.
I think the board needs to go out there and play Hantus.
I've seen it, we went on a visit.
I, uh, field trip for the board, field trip for the board, there we go.
Saw it firsthand, it sounded like.
Carpenter's writing that now, we're going to go do a field trip at. Good job, really.
Thank you.
Amazing.
Well, thank you, Kyle, appreciate your report. Um, it's time for our roundtable and, uh, since I started down there, uh, earlier, Adam, I'll start on your end.
Sure, um, it's kind of been a, a hard month. Done my crying already, so I don't think I'll have any, any more for this. But I like to buy coffee and lunch for pretty much anyone who wants to go. If you just need someone to talk to, my wife might disagree, but I'm actually a good listener. Um, so if, that's not funny, Julie, I'm just kidding. Seriously, I'm, I'm someone you can talk to, I want everybody to, to know that. Um, coffee, lunch, you name it, I will be there, I'll even buy.
Yeah.
Anytime, anytime, if you just want to talk. That's all I have to say for roundtable.
Julie?
I think on those same words, I really didn't want to talk tonight. I just wanted a couple of minutes of thinking what we've been through in the month. So, um, my prayers are to those families and I just wanted to, if we could just take a couple of minutes just to sit here and rethink about. And that was my report, thank you.
Plus?
Adam is a really great golfer. You ever want to go and win?
Adam Rutherford is an outstanding golfer. I played golf with him recently, um, at MSBA for the Future Builders, uh, it's a fundraiser for MSBA. And he is one of the best golfers I've ever played with. And everybody's going, yeah, she doesn't play very much, but, um, he really is an incredible golfer. Uh, Saturday night, uh, the Lee Summit Symphony Orchestra will be presenting its, uh, fall concert called Masquerade, Musicians on Parade. Uh, I have the privilege of serving on that board. And if you want to see, because it's going to be a visual treat as well as a really nice, uh, treat for our, our ears and everything, um, their concert's fantastic. They've got some wonderful music. Paul Shroud, Gloria Helmer, uh, Paul, former district employee, both of them district employees, former district employees will be singing from Phantom of the Opera. That is worth the price of the ticket alone, it's so fantastic. So, um, I have, uh, my daughter has two dancers that will be performing. Uh, it's going to be a great night. It's a short concert, you know, their concerts aren't real long, starts at 7:30, will be over by 8:20, 8:30, I think. Uh, but please come see that concert. Uh, it will be well worth your time. And I think that's all I have to say.
Dennis?
Oh, oh, well, let's take a look up here real quick. Um, Cheryl Frankie asked that we share the Race for the Future video. This was, uh, this video was done by a Lee Summit North student. His name is, let me just tell you, um, Michael Edson, Lee Summit North student produced this video. It's real short, guys.
Are you ready to run? Are you ready to run? Thank you for your support of LR7, thank, LSR7, thank you for being here, we're excited that you're here. Your work makes a difference for these young people in the front as well as our teachers. Thank you, have a great, great morning.
Woodland Elementary will get a $500 classroom grant, and Westview will get $1,000.
Thank you, Amy, for pulling that up.
Hello, Dennis?
Just real quickly, I was a little remiss early back in, with our, just when the board gave the reports of our different committees. It is exciting, because I talked about the CAC meeting next week at the MIC. Well, in January, when we had our, when we had our steering committee meeting with those who are on there, we talked about a variety of things, and as we talked about, something came up about Great Beginnings. And there were several members on that steering committee that didn't even know where Great Beginnings was at. So, in January, we're going to have, we really didn't have a meeting scheduled till March, and that's with our legislators, again, but in January, we're going to meet at the, at Great Beginnings, and so that the members there can see what that, what that building is all about. Because, as you know, we have great needs, and as Dr. Hedrick talked earlier in the evening, you know, there's eight classrooms, or eight buildings out there that house early childhood students. And if we could somehow do some things different, that would maybe free up some of the classrooms that we need down the road, but we first of all got to understand what Great Beginnings is all about. So anyway, I apologize for that. Real quickly, MSBA conference was, first time I've ever been there as a board member, I've had to go down and serve at different times, at years, put on presentations, but I've suggested to President White that maybe that we have a work session, and I know the SLT is swamped and with everything, but maybe somehow, and I don't know exactly how that works, but we all went to different conferences, or different sessions. Some of us at times were in the same session, but we might have heard some things a little differently than, but to set and just brainstorm, and SLT members have probably been, as they have their different meetings throughout the different districts, just to have a conversation and see where we're at. So, and I know, I've talked to Bob about that, and I think that's, I'm sure that's going, that is going to happen. I am on the, I'm a member of the Lee Summit Historical Society, and we met last week for our annual meeting, and it's surprising, not surprising, but the number of students from our different buildings in our district who attend, and they go down there and have scavenger hunts and learn about the history of Lee Summit. And yeah, October 20, that's a good point, October 20, next week, October 20, yeah, October 25th, Russ Berlin, our symphony director, we have an annual roast that will, is a fundraiser for the museum. And we had, they also had, they've had, their visitors, they've had five people from different countries who have visited the little old Lee Summit Museum. So, it was interesting. In our, in our finance meeting yesterday, just in the conversation, we talked a little bit about how is the conference room being, or I'm going to call it conference room at MIC, and Dr. Hedrick indicated that, which I think so neat, is that, you know, we're a big district now, and we have three high schools, we have all these elementary schools, we have three middle schools, and when you need, when you have in-service for staff, like if the social studies staff from the three middle schools need to meet, instead of, they get, number one, to get to know each other, they get to be involved, and they're all hearing the same in-service at the same time, same with, I'm sure with grade level activities throughout the elementary. I just think that's neat, because we're getting so big, it's hard for the fam, for all our employees, I call them the family, to get together and be able to share. So, hats off, again, there's another thing that's good. That's all I have.
Jackie?
Thank you. When we had our earlier reports, I thought we were focusing on committees, so I didn't report on MSBA, and I'll just take a second to let folks know that because of our recent events here in the district, I spent some time in safety-oriented sessions, and one of them, and I know we still have one member of our transportation group here tonight, was school bus drivers being key to safety for the children of the district. And it was a wonderful session led by a former highway patrolman, and I'd love to visit with you about that anytime, and it was, it was just a really great experience for me to be in some of those sessions. And the work that I've been tasked to do for the board speaks a lot to school and community relations improvement, which is around our third priority, as well as making community engagement a lifestyle for school districts. And North Kansas City was the first school district that I listened to their session, and I have some personal relationships with their leadership, so it was a really great, great opportunity to hear what some of our peers are engaged in. And through my professional life, I serve on a board of the Public Affairs Council, and we were at Stanford University last week, so I have a Stanford t-shirt now. Couple of them. And we heard from an author, Chad Heath, and he has written a book called The Power of Moments. And one of the interactive discussions we had was asking us to remember how many moments we remember, other than an athletic event, in our K through 12 years, that we remember, and how many of those there were. And I have to say, as a Lee Summit School District grad, I was, had my hand up among the longest, I think I dropped at about 10, but because there's just so many things that you could think about that we do, but we also know that there are folks that we need to have more of those moments with, that are academic in their orientation. So, we just need to kind of think about that. I'm going to read that book, I had a lot of great information that I learned from his discussion, and I really felt very fortunate to have had that experience. And the other MSBA thing that Phyllis was mentioning, on their legislative platform, I've had conversations with their legislative advocacy group leader, and we'll be talking about, usually those positions are developed with some sort of history, and there may be a little bit more that we've got to have some mutual understanding, and we can learn from each other along the way, and see what we can do to support, you know, our teachers, most definitely. We want to make sure that we're thinking forward in how we can be good advocates to them. And finally, I think someone mocked the Dreamer category for the foundation of K through 12. Some of us have a medical condition that we aren't supposed to be out in the mornings in the cold air, and we might not be able to breathe if we are. So, I thought it was a great idea to add the Dreamers, and I am more than proud to be the team captain of the non-runner walker persons who are supporters of Lee Summit Education Foundation.
I'm a Dreamer too, so I joined.
And, but I had a worse medical condition this year, I got hit on the head exiting an airplane by somebody's computer bag. And for anyone who ever thinks I'm a little goofy acting, I felt a little bit as if I were, I was hoping I wasn't having a concussion. So, that's, that's why you didn't see me, but the check was in long beforehand, so I think it was a great event, and I loved the video, thanks for sharing that with us tonight.
Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, I'll be brief, realizing that Kevin Whaley has some things he wants to get to, so I'll be extremely brief. Race for the Future, if you missed that event, and I'm sure you all have had more opportunities than yours truly to participate, what a community event. Super, super excited, I mean, to be a part of it, and that was just phenomenal. As relates to the video clip, I have to, full disclosure, I ran across the field when the sixth graders were running around the field, and one still beat me, I think. So, that was tough. Sixth graders, I might add. The other thing, speaking of that lack of athleticism, we do have some exciting things going on, on the athletic front this weekend, as we start the playoff season. And I believe our furthest trek will be Lee Summit High School to Joplin. And Lee Summit West will be going up against Raypack in the first round, and North versus Rockhurst. So, that's exciting, as we see where our young men can take their postseason, postseason situation here in football. So, that's exciting. Park Hill, I heard someone mention Park Hill, I would just tell you that we've been in communication, Dr. Miller and Dr. Hill, with the folks in Park Hill, and they've done some phenomenal work around issues that are plaguing students now, and they've basically been gracious enough to say, "Here's our stuff, take a close look at it, adopt those things that you see might be beneficial to you and your team across this metropolitan area." School district superintendents have been so, so gracious. We have schools who went out of their way to provide lunch to the team at one of our schools, and they've had assembly programs at other buildings and other districts, so it makes you proud in a difficult time to be a member of such a caring group of school districts and superintendents and building teams and the like. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, I'll just hit a couple of things really quickly. I wanted to thank Dr. Carpenter and Dennis and Dr. Kephart for coming to the Truman Heartland Gala, it was an awesome event. Truman Heartland does wonderful things for Eastern Jackson County and Lee Summit in particular. As a matter of fact, there is a, is a fund that is dedicated specifically to Lee Summit that only Lee Summit can access through Truman Heartland, and some wonderful opportunities for our staff to look at two different grants that we can, we can work through there, one through the Browning Foundation, the other's through the Jelly Foundation. So, those are great opportunities, the event was, was a lot of fun, and got a chance to have a good time, have a good meal, and sit with some really interesting folks. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I did, as I think I told you last month, I went to my 50th class reunion Friday and Saturday at Shawnee Mission West. I was, I kept saying Lee Summit West, which is weird. Well, not really, because I've been here way longer than I was ever there. But I got a chance to go back and tour Shawnee Mission West, I hadn't been there for 50 years, since the day I walked out of the building, hadn't been back. And it was an interesting experience, a lot of it was the same, oddly enough. I mean, a lot of it, the cafeteria is still the same cafeteria, the academic wing is still the same, the gym is still the same, but the campus has gone cuckoo, it's everywhere. School is huge, and I was trying to think in comparison to the size of our schools here, square footage wise, I think it's, it's got to be bigger than most of ours, but they have 1,800 kids in that building. And I was wondering, as a principal starts to wonder, how are they supervising these kids in this huge building, their people are everywhere. They also talked a lot, we had a very young assistant principal who got stuck with the duty of touring all the old people around for the tour, and, but he was very proud of all the things that they were doing, and as I, and I don't mean this to slight Shawnee Mission any, but I'm sitting there the whole time thinking, "Well, we did that 13 years ago, we did that, you know, we've already been doing that." You know, these are things that we've, we've been doing here for a long, long time, and some of those are very new for Shawnee Mission. I think it's great that they're, they're doing some of those things, and a lot of our people said, "Oh gee, I would really like to go back to high school," and those of us who had been in the school business said, "Nah, nah, we're pretty much over that." But had a great time with that, that was fun. Did have some interesting things that they brought up that they are doing that we don't do, that I did want to talk to Dr. Carpenter about at some time, which is, I think, some good ideas on math tutoring, so. But otherwise, it's been, it's been an interesting, interesting month and a half. So, and that's, I think everyone else has said very well what, what that means, so. Any other thoughts or things, and we are running a little late, so with no further business to come before this body, we are adjourned.